I'd like to call the regular Board of Education February 6th meeting to order. Ms. Hibs?
Mrs. Felter.
Present.
Mrs. Martin.
Present.
Mr. McCune.
Here.
Mr. Parker.
Here.
Mr. Pollan.
Here.
Mr. Shear. Dr. Daniels.
Here.
Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for being here on this cold night. Our first presentation this evening will be the Read Across America presentation.
I'm Don Branham. I'm an Olathe teacher and parent. I teach language arts at California Trail Middle School. And this is Caitlin Kendall, President of Olathe NEA, and I'm also a member. And I'm here to talk to you about what's going on for Read Across America and how we support that initiative here in our schools. The nation's largest reading party, NEA's Read Across America Day, happens March 3rd. Across the country, NEA members are busy decorating classroom doors, planning green egg and ham breakfasts, and organizing reading pep rallies and flash mobs. For the second year in a row, Read Across America will highlight the importance of oral health and the connection between oral health and literacy, thanks to national sponsor and benefits provider Renaissance Dental. Poor oral health is a leading cause of absenteeism in schools, causing students to lose millions of hours and critical reading instruction. Oral health problems cause students to miss 51 million school hours per year. Students who are absent miss critical instruction time, especially in early grades where reading skills are a focus. To that end, I would like to highlight some information about Olathe school programs that encourage literacy and student health. Now, this is according to the Olathe Public Schools Foundation website. All kids need to brush, well, this is from NEA actually, all kids need to brush for two minutes, two times per day, and read for 20 minutes each day. That's a total of 24 minutes focused on developing good oral health and reading skills. Now, the Olathe Public Schools Foundation, I just wanted to highlight something that has happened due to their initiative that supports reading. 14,000 students, one book. I take this from their website. Fred, Families Read Every Day. It's a community-wide book club for K-5 students. And the Olathe Public Schools Foundation funded this project through a $60,000 grant to the Olathe Public Schools. Every K-5 student and staff member in each of our 34 elementary schools was given Mason-Dixon pep disasters by Claudia Mills. Our goal was to engage our entire school community of students, families, and teachers in a shared reading experience that we can all enjoy together. Why did they launch the Fred Project? Research has shown that children who have been read aloud to at home arrive at school better, prepared to learn, become better readers, and generally have more success in school. Reading aloud enhances a child's imagination, vocabulary, comprehension, and fosters a lifelong love of reading. So, in support of student health, our school district's website, I found, has a wealth of information about nutrition and exercise, not just, in addition to all the programs we have here, but those are just some resources that parents can look at. Additionally, we have regular vision, hearing, and other screenings for all Olathe students. Finally, let me close by emphasizing how parents and patrons can help support reading and health for our students. First, consider making a contribution to the Olathe Public Schools Foundation. Our major saver fundraiser, which I believe is happening in many schools at this time, they probably stagger them throughout the year, but anyway, that's an excellent way to support our students, and its discount card pays for itself at many local businesses. The Fred program and many other learning and health programs are supported by the foundation. Furthermore, consider visiting any of our schools' book fairs and make a purchase for your own children, your school, or donate a book for a student in need. For example, at my school, California Trail, that's happening next week. And I know that most, if not all, schools, elementary and middle at least, will have a book fair at some point during the year. Finally, remember to read and brush your teeth twice daily, especially on March 3rd, Read Across America Day. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, our second presentation this evening will be our presentation by the Olathe Northwest Students and Staffs regarding debate and forensics.
Good evening, and thank you for having us here. I'm Josh Anderson, Olathe Northwest, but really representing all of the four programs in the Olathe District. In a moment, you're going to meet two fantastic students, but I want to tell you a little bit about debate and forensics. Not everybody knows what it is and how it works. And so, I always like to offer an analogy. You're familiar with cross-country in the fall and track and field in the spring. And debate is very similar. In cross-country, you just run, and it's very intense, and that's all you do. Debate, which is a co-curricular course in the fall, all you do is debate. You go to debate tournaments, and that's all that they have at those tournaments is just debate. In the spring, you're familiar with track and field, having a variety of events, jumping, over things, throwing things, running around, running over things. Forensics is very similar. There are 14 different events, some of which occur on Friday, some of which occur on Saturday. They involve debating, acting, and speaking. And so, between the two programs, we serve a wide variety of students. But, I'm going to introduce Mackenzie Lumen, who's a senior at Olathe Northwest. She's one of the top 100 students in the nation, ranked by the National Forensic League, and she's going to tell you a little bit more.
I would consider the debaters and the forensicators that we have in our district some of the most hard-working kids by far. Debate's the class that I always have homework in, but it's different than science or math class where the assignments are actually graded. Mr. Anderson specifically says that all of the work we do, we know what we need to do, and we spend a lot of time outside of debate and forensics class, at work nights after school, or practicing our performances at home, getting better, and going to win the trophies that we earn on the weekends. To quote Mr. Anderson, he's always said, "Since my first day of my freshman year, our awards and medals are won Monday through Friday. Saturdays are just for picking up our trophies."
And actually, you'll hear from Elena Wahlberg, also a senior, also in the top 100 students nationally.
The common question many high school students will ask at some point or another is, "When am I going to use this in the real world?" But, debate provides an answer to this question by contextualizing what we learn in the rest of school, but in a setting that's external to the classroom. Policy debate, which is specifically fall activity, deals with the pros and cons of implementing different governmental policies or legislation. And this requires a large knowledge base that's gained throughout the rest of your education, whether it's history class teaching you the effects that past policies have had, or English and language classes teaching you how to analyze text and determine what sources are credible. Every core class and every elective factors into gaining the maximum amount of education possible from policy debate. And I would consider this class to be the culmination of what I've learned in my education career. It encompasses not only the core classes, not only the skills that you gain in debate as an activity itself, but it teaches you how to become a functioning member of society by combining all of these things.
They're good. There's a reason they're in the top 100. You know, in a second, we'll play a short video and take some of your questions, but the message that I want to leave you with is, you know, after having taught for 17 years, you know, I've gone from being an English teacher to a debate coach and have taught, you know, English for 15 of those years, now our program is large enough, we have 150 students, that it alone has become a full-time job. But, in that time, I have watched as our core areas, English, science, social studies, and math, create the anchor of a school, and that's where the bulk of the learning comes from. We are seeing with things like Common Core and Career, College and Career readiness, that it's programs like these that really take on the bulk of allowing students to activate that learning very quickly. And so, it forms a very symbiotic relationship where both of them are equally important. And so, we'll start with the video, and I'm going to have really help just a little bit. You know, the analogy that I always give to my students on the first day of class is that being a teenager means having a cloud full of bees, and it feels like in your head that you have all these thoughts flying around haphazardly and chaotically. And forensics and debate gives you the ability to focus those thoughts so that everything you have in your head ends up being articulated in clear sentences, just like you want them to be.
Just sitting in class, I see other kids struggling so hard, and the stuff that they're struggling with, I find easy because of debate and forensics.
It's really helped me be able to talk about what my mind is trying to say and just like be able to become a better speaker.
I remember in ninth grade, everyone was freaking out because we had to go up and give a five-minute presentation, and everyone was like, "Oh, I don't know how to do that." And I could go up and talk for five minutes about it just because I knew how to keep it going without fluffing it up, because that's what you learn in debate.
Are you saying that Europe should sacrifice its own economy to get this done when the United States can easily do it?
We are taking away other countries' valuable space objects that are placed up there for a reason.
China is a direct foreign investment beast. First, you have that they have developed $77 billion in the IMF alone.
To beat the other team, that's our, like, main goal.
Crush the other team.
Yeah.
We destroy them.
Yeah.
Every time. Except, we always lose one for some reason.
Just, just, just one.
We psych out our opponents during a match by writing a ton of different, disadvantaged their cases.
Yeah, different kinds of arguments.
And saying how it will not work. They don't get to respond to all our arguments, so that's how they lose.
First round, we went in there and we just destroyed them. They had no chance. They were like, "What is happening here?" And I was like, "That's just me and him."
It was impressive.
Yeah.
Joel's a god.
Please. Thanks, man.
I love you.
Thanks.
A good guy.
First grade, all you wanted was a boyfriend, but all the good men were taken, so the only one you had as an option was?
Rusty Bloomquist.
Hi, Shuji.
To advocate rather than inhibit discussion on prejudice.
It's time we, as a society, finally had the talk.
The New York Police Department has an average hit per issue of 18 percent. So, how on earth would we be able to train teachers to have the capabilities to kill a gunman within a school?
My favorite part of coaching debate and forensics is seeing students come into the program as freshmen who aren't confident, they're not able to socialize well with other students, they can't organize thoughts in any way, they can't present topics, and yet, by the time that they leave, they're confident public speakers and able to work with other people.
I have never been a social butterfly. Thank goodness for forensics.
I didn't really know anybody. I was pretty quiet. I didn't, I never really talked in any of my classes as a freshman, and now you could probably ask any of my teachers, and one of the more obnoxious of the class.
At first, it's kind of scary because you see this whole group and you're like, "I'll never be friends with them" and stuff, but like, after time and hanging out at tournaments and things, you really get to know everyone.
Mercedes Trent is my boo. Like, she is my best friend. We did a duo together this year, and we've just grown so much closer because of it.
We hated each other, and then we realized that we, like, we were good at debate, and then we became brothers.
It was like a bromance.
Yeah, kind of.
The Wall Street Journal reported that dedicated participation in drama and debate significantly increased the success rate of college applicants. State and national award winners have a 22% to 30% higher acceptance rate at top-tier colleges. This is significantly better than other extracurricular activities such as school newspaper reporter, sports team captain, class president, and band. Additionally, Raven Debate and Forensics awards its seniors with nearly $10,000 in college scholarships every year.
I needed to hire an employee, and it was a fresh college grad, and this individual had, was a four-time national qualifier in debate and forensics, and that was prominently displayed on her resume, which was really important because that caught my eye. I think I was more impressed with her attributes and the types of things that she talked about in her interview, and I could see, I could see how that was formed in debate and forensics because we could see that in my own children. So, I'd say that based on her experience with debate and forensics, she got an interview, and ultimately, she ended up getting the job.
I'll close with a recognition for Elena and Mackenzie. They recently went to the six-day state debate championship, and out of 76 teams, they got third place, losing in the semifinal round to the eventual state champion. They're also going to represent both Olathe and the East Kansas District at the National Speech and Debate Tournament in beautiful Kansas City this summer, and we're just so glad that you could have us here. We'll take any questions you have, and if not, thank you so much for having us.
Questions, board members?
Thank you.
Great job.
Thank you.
You've stunned us into submission. Thank you, nice job. Normally, we would be doing recognitions and awards this evening, but we have encouraged families to stay home where it is warm, and so, we are going to move on right now to our action consent agenda. So, we have items 5.01 through 5.08. We can move all of them together? Sorry. Or separately at your pleasure.
Just have a quick question about accounts payable, but we can lump it in. John, on the, what was the question I asked you? I forget the label of it, was the count?
The label that are interfund?
Yeah. It seemed like there's, what, we, an awful lot of them. You said it was just a student refund?
It's student refunds, and some of those are determination free and reduced lunch, and therefore, 50% reduction in instructional material fees, and those go in kind of waves throughout the fall, and this is kind of the last piece of that to adjust for those.
Is that a new category with the new counting? Because I didn't remember seeing that before.
It's labeled interfund, and it's kind of mechanical, the reason why, it's transferring between two software systems, so it looks like it's coming over from another account, but it's really not, so.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
Other questions?
No, I haven't, but I'd make a motion.
That would be fabulous.
I would approve the consent agenda items numbered 5.01 through 5.08 as presented. Second?
A motion by Mr. McCune and a second by Mr. Pollan to approve the consent agenda items numbered 5.01 to 5.08 as presented. Ms. Felter?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Pollan?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
All right, moving on to action items, bids, contracts, and agreements. Item 6.01, the seamless epoxy flooring bids.
I just, I had a quick question on 6.02. Mr. Thomason says eliminate carpet $35.90 and then add seamless epoxy at $51,925. Surely, carpet costs more than $35.90, so there must be some offsets there. That was just the labor. The carpet had already been ordered and was delivered to the site before we made the change. We're going to use it in one of the summer projects this summer, so it will show up in our bids for carpet replacement later this summer, so that was just the labor for the carpet. And the seamless epoxy, that's for the entire job then? The $51? This is just the, this is just the difference, which is primarily those activity areas in the pods. The corridors already had seamless epoxy. These are just those three activity areas, four activity areas, I guess. Just a general question from the original bid specs. I thought a few years ago, we decided to go with epoxy. We didn't, we didn't, and the initial bid specs were not for epoxy, they were for carpet? The initial bid specs for the corridors was seamless epoxy. These are those little, what some people refer to as the pod, the activity areas. Those state carpet up until just recently, and the decision was made to make those also seamless epoxy. Okay, that was, so. That's what's in this change. And all the renovations, then, when we do the renovations, that we have a bid for that as well on 6.01, that's for the corridors as well as those pods? As well as those activity areas. I see. So, what was overlooked? Well, I guess it wasn't overlooked, we just had a change in? We just had a change in philosophy. As regards to the wet areas, to go with epoxy rather than going with the carpet? I think originally, in the design of that prototype, it was felt that the students, that carpet was acoustically quieter, and also that the students spent some time on the floor in those areas. As it turns out, that's not how those areas are used, and the seamless epoxy works just fine. The reason we went to seamless epoxy over carpet, even though it's more expensive for the initial insulation, long-term maintenance and upkeep is, the life is significantly longer for epoxy than for the carpet? It's longer lifespan and significantly less maintenance cost. It's easier to maintain by a great deal. Good enough, thank you. Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm going to back up now and go back to item 6.01.
Sorry.
That's okay.
I moved to approve the low bid from Artistic Flooring, an amount of $450,000 for 6.01.
Second. A motion by Mr. Pollan and a second by Ms. Felter to approve the seamless epoxy flooring bids. Ms. Hibs?
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Pollan?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
And now, we'll take on item 6.02, which is the change order in excess of $20,000, which, Mr. Parker had one question, are there any other questions about that?
Move to approve change order eliminating carpet and adding seamless epoxy flooring as presented. Second.
A motion by Mr. McCune and a second, or excuse me, a motion by Mr. Parker and a second by Mr. McCune to approve the change order in excess of $20,000. Ms. Hibs? Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Pollan?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
And just for the benefit of our public, we, if there are change orders in construction that are in excess of $20,000, rather than have individuals on-site make those decisions, they bring those back to the board for our review, since those weren't a part of the original bid package. So, we appreciate that. Thank you very much. Okay, next, we have item 7.01, an action item, to set the end-of-year special meeting date and time. We had discussed previously, June 25th at 6:00 PM, which is a Wednesday, as the date and time for the end-of-year special meeting. Mr. Hutchison, I'm sure is available to answer any questions you might have. And if not, I will entertain a motion.
I move to approve Wednesday, June 25th, 2014, 6:00 PM, as the date and time for the end-of-year special meeting.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Martin and a second by Mr. McCune to set the end-of-year, excuse me, special meeting date and time. Ms. Hibs? Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Pollan?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Pollan?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Moving.
For whatever it's worth, I will be gone that night, so.
Can I have your dessert?
Enjoy.
All right. Moving on to 7.03 is the budget development, excuse me, the budget development goals and calendar for 2014-15. Questions for Mr. Hutchison? Then I will entertain a motion.
I move to approve the budget development goals and calendar for fiscal year 2014-15 as presented.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Martin and a second by Mr. McCune to approve the budget development goals and calendar for fiscal year 2014-15 as presented.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Martin and a second by Mr. McCune to approve the budget development goals and calendar for fiscal year 2014-15 as presented. Ms. Hibs? Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Pollan?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Item 7.04 is to approve a student trip, the Olathe Northwest debate team to Chesterfield, Missouri, February 14th and 15th, 2014. Are they still here? Have they left? Okay, all right. Questions?
They should make us convince them it's working.
Come back, all right.
Do a presentation. Yeah, do that. I move to approve the student trip as presented.
Second. A motion by Mr. Pollan and a second by Ms. Felter to approve the student trip as presented. Ms. Hibs? Mrs. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Pollan?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
All right, we are moving on to future action items. Head start policies and procedures, the pool replaster at fronter trail, roofing repair bids, security camera bids, court of tax appeals for Millbrook Elementary, student fees, bleacher and locker replacements, and synthetic turf fields. Questions on any of these items?
Just a quick question for Ms. Thomason on the pool replaster. What have we learned? What do we do differently? All right? Please do. I know it's been there a long time, so it's, we've got our money's worth, but what do we do different?
Been there over 20 years, and actually, we'd only expect about 12 to 15 years out of a normal plaster job on a pool like that, so we've done very well in maintaining and getting the life out of it, so we're looking forward to getting another 20, maybe 25 years after this.
Has the technology changed? Do we do anything?
Yes, it has. There's a lot of new plaster types out there, not like the old days, and everything is modified, and it's a lot better processed now.
Congratulations for getting such a long life out of it.
Thank you.
That's it.
Thank you.
I have just a quick question about fees.
Okay.
I noticed that we haven't changed our fee for full-day kindergarten. I know that there are proposals to have that included in our state funding. I guess I assume that in the future, we can, we can change those fees or reduce those fees as we need to?
Yes, and the expectation would be that if the legislature were to provide some dollars for that, we would reduce our fee to our parents accordingly.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Board members? All right.
I did have one about food service. John can answer that, or would Mr. King ring you and be answered? The increases are a result of federal mandate? Is that, is that correct?
Correct. Similar to prior years, food service has to go through a calculation to determine how much basically local effort is going into, into the pricing, and that calculation is determined that these increases are necessary to maintain your federal funding.
And so, we don't, if we don't take the increases, then we lose federal funding?
Correct.
Because of lack of local effort?
Basically, considered local effort. In a way, we are running very efficient. We're a large organization, and so, we do it pretty effectively, and it looks like we should be charging more in the formulas, and unfortunately, that's the way it works. You have to, you have to charge what they dictate.
Approximately how many federal dollars are we talking?
Millions of dollars.
Okay, all right. So, so if there's some question about that from the public, we can say, "We do this in order to..."
Maintain them.
Because basically, if we didn't get the federal money, it'd be more than $2.45 for a student.
That's correct.
All right.
Any other questions? All right, next on our agenda, items 9.01 through 9.03 are written reports, and board members have an opportunity right now to ask any questions that they would like to. I know Mr. McCune and I appreciated the opportunity last week to visit with Dr. Banikowski and Ms. Matthew and Mr. Jaeger about the elementary report card, and thank you for their thoroughness in, in working on that process. It sounds like there were many teachers involved as well, and also a parent group, so we appreciate that information. Any questions on that topic? All right, at this time, then, we will move to ten dot zero one, which is board topics for discussion. I know Ms. Martin has some information she would like to share. Are there any other board members who have topics this evening? No?
No.
Okay. Amy?
I wanted to update you all on the last week. I spent four days in Washington, DC with a delegation from KASB to Washington, DC, where we attended the National School Boards Association Federal Relations Network Conference. It was three days of activities with school boards, school board members from across the country, where we learned a little bit more about federal issues in education. As part of it, we had some homework, and I had several questions about the specific ways that federal policy impacts the Olathe School District, and Dr. Barry and his staff provided those, those answers to me, and I know that there was quite a work, a lot of work that went into that, and I, I appreciate that very much because it was very helpful. On the last day, which was Tuesday, we met as small, in small groups with our members in, in the House and in the Senate. I had, I was part of about a thirty-minute meeting with Senator Moran and a forty-five-minute meeting with Representative Yoder, and, and in those meetings, they were both very anxious to hear about how federal programs are impacting the Olathe School District. They were, they were excited to hear about the great things we're doing, but they also listened while I shared with them some of the challenges, because as you all know, the public may not know that the additional costs of our IDEA programs and our title programs are supposed to be funded at forty percent by the federal government. Those are, those are mandated programs. We have to provide those services to students, yet they're only funded at about seventeen percent this year. It's gone down the last couple of years, and, and that money, we have to transfer from our general fund into those programs. The last two years, I believe, that it's been to the tune of about twelve million dollars per year, so, you know, quite an undertaking for our district to do. They, they listened very politely. However, they reminded us that money doesn't grow on trees, and that they have, they have to appropriate limited dollars accordingly. However, they, they were very polite and, and very interested to hear what we had to say. The other focus of the week was a national campaign that NSBA is putting out called Stand Up for Public Schools. The idea is similar to what we're experiencing here in Kansas, is going on across the country, where there are outside groups that are kind of trying to tell the story of schools and maybe not paint them in the best light, and that it's up to us as school board members and as school districts to enlist advocates on our behalf and to share our story about the great things that are going on in our schools, and help ensure that public education remains strong throughout the country. I put buttons at each of your place that has a link to their website. They have a lot of materials, some things that we could share on our, our website or in our newsletters, that basically show the ways that public schools are, you know, the great things that are going on in public schools. So you will, you have that button, it's got a link to the website, I encourage you to take a look at it, and then I have a whole host of materials that I'll share with Dr. Barry, and the communications subcommittee could take a look at those and see how they might be appropriate to use in our district.
Thank you. Thank you for taking your time to attend that meeting, appreciate it. Comments? Any other board members?
I'd just like to quickly remind us that our task is to support public schools, but our support, our task is also to support as taxpayers, to support the best education for our children, however that comes, whether public education is it, or whether there are other means. It's our children we're talking about, so I'd like to just make sure that we keep the kids in focus, not necessarily the goal of public education, but the goal of educating our students.
Dr. Barry, at this time, we are ready for your superintendent comments.
Well, just a few comments tonight, then, I'll share. You'll see tonight in the HR report, it's retirement time. By our policy, it's the time where staff members are to notify us if they are going to be retiring for next year, so that's why you see the lengthy list. It's about like it has been in the past couple of years. But again, the challenge for us is always that we have a lot of experience that goes out the door, and, and we're pleased for them if they've gotten to a point in their career where they're ready to retire, but then it's our challenge to go out and find some really good replacements for them. So you'll see that in the HR report tonight. I will make mention just briefly of the white stuff that's on the ground and the challenge that it's been in the past few days, and only from a standpoint of moving forward. By state statute, schools are to attend one thousand one hundred and sixteen hours each year, and so that's our challenge, and now with some cancellation days, it becomes even more challenging. Everybody wants to always know, well, how many days do we have built in? How many do we have left? It's just a little bit of a fluid number, because again, it's a log that's kept by every school on site, and high schools have a little bit different schedule, especially once we hit spring, when they have finals, exams, and so forth, where they have, you know, slightly less time. It's just minimal, but anyway, a little bit less time than some of the other schools. But we currently are okay, we've had enough built in that we have survived this, and we have, have just a little bit left, but tough decision that it is always to make early in the morning like that, or in this case, we've been able to make it the day before, which I know is appreciated by parents and others, so that they can make arrangements, but we are looking forward to getting all students back next Monday and having school again. Want to just mention something that I think you've seen the release on, but it's still